Join 2019.
He has actually been known to take potluck in where this is like live. And oh, it's rings tonight.
You're good.
Bear.
Yeah.
Off your step.
Keep you on time.
Oh, we are. Thank you. You need a bigger stick outside of here. All right, that's okay, because the mic's not on.
Good evening and welcome to this Tuesday, April 2nd, 2019, meeting of the Raymore Planning and Zoning Commission. Please rise for the pledgeable allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Let me remind commissioners, please make sure your microphone is lighted and speak into the mic for the record. And we will call roll. Commissioner Wiggins.
Present.
Commissioner Armstrong.
Present.
Commissioner Bowie. Commissioner Crane.
Present.
Commissioner Pfizer.
Present.
Commissioner Peterman.
Present.
Commissioner Urquia. Mayor Turnbow.
Present.
And Commissioner Faulkner is present. We do have a quorum. Okay, I should follow the agenda on screen. No personal appearances scheduled this evening. One item on consent agenda, approval of minutes from our March 19th, 2019 meeting. And unless any of the commissioners have concerns, I would entertain a motion either to approve consent agenda or approve the minutes from March 19th.
I move that we approve the consent agenda, consent agenda, excuse me, as presented.
Motion by Commissioner Wiggins to approve consent agenda and was the second from Commissioner Crane. All right, thank you. Moving along, nothing this evening in unfinished. I'm sorry. Okay. Oops, I'm fine. No, thank you for keeping an eye on me. Okay, let's see. Let's rewind. Motion by Commissioner Wiggins, second by Commissioner Crane, to approve consent agenda. I missed a step. All those in favor, raise a hand, please. One, two, three, five, six. Six in favor, any opposed? And abstentions, Mayor Turnbow. Okay, so let's see, I had six in favor, none opposed, and one abstention. And for the record, let me note that Commissioner Bowie has arrived. And sorry you missed a vote on the minutes, but we'll, we'll move right along. We approved him. Keep an eye on me, sir. All right. Now moving along. Nothing in unfinished business this evening under new business. Oh, well, okay, this reads like it did, but we're gonna add a second true. Are we gonna add a second item under new business?
Yes.
Okay. So we'll hear the first item under new business, case 19004, our annual review of the growth management plan. This case does require a public hearing. Please remind me of that. And Mr. Grass, I think the floor is all yours.
Thank you, sir. If you think back to the 2013 timeframe, I think a few of you were on the commission at that time was when our growth management plan was adopted with the condition that staff brings it back every year for review or assessment of the contents of the plan. So here we are in 2019 for the annual review. Within the report, you'll find a lot of information on the different categories, on how we assess the plan. I won't go into a lot of detail on each of those, because to be honest with you, a lot of it kind of remains the same from year to year as we continue to chip away at those goals. But I did want to point out a couple of things that we'll be looking at here into the future, as well as one of the recommendations of the review overall. The first one has to deal with our current efforts on annexation. Recently, just this year, we've partnered with an annexation consultant to help us study and kind of narrow down a focus area of where the city could expand to grow east towards 291. And so we've been working with them over the last several months to kind of narrow that scope down and figure out those areas that we want to start to study. If you look towards the end of your packet, you'll see two maps that I included. The first one shows a, is the land use, future land use map as it exists in our plan today. And you'll see outlined in kind of the purple dashed area is what we called our annexation intent area, which is essentially the area that we were interested in for future growth for the city. As you can see, it encompasses a very, very large area going east of 291, just a little bit, and just south of Hubock Hill Road, so a really, really large swath of land. In our work with our current annexation consultant, it's been decided that our approach this time would be to kind of narrow that down, still moving eastward and maybe not so much south, but still focusing our growth east and finding out which areas make most sense. So on the second map, you'll see, still in the kind of purple outlined area, is our newly adopted annexation intent area. As you can see, the eastern boundary is just to the west side of 291, so we won't be crossing 291 anymore. And we stayed just north of Hubock Hill Road, so we're not looking really at extending anywhere south in the future. So we just wanted to include that map to bring you all up to speed and let you know what we've been working on. And ultimately, this will be really the only recommendation of the review this year is to incorporate these updated maps into the plan. So that would be the, at the end of the case, the motion that we're looking forward to accept the report as presented and incorporate those updates into the, into the growth management plan. The other item I wanted to bring up and just discuss a little bit so it doesn't, you know, catch you all off guard is that each year for the past several years, the city manager has set aside funds for future comprehensive planning efforts such as the growth management plan or the strategic plan, or really any of the comprehensive planning efforts that the city undertakes. Recently, the city manager has expressed an interest to update essentially all of the master plans that the city has, so the transportation master plan, parks master plan, sewer and water master plans, really the whole gamut of the city's master planning efforts. In doing that, we think the timing is right to kind of bring all those plans together, because currently the way they are, they're all individual documents that are kind of tied to one another, you know, not, not in a very clear way. And so in an effort to bring all those together, we think the timing is right to come together and bring all those together and update and kind of put them all in together into one true comprehensive plan. It's important to note that the commission, just like you have authority over the growth management plan, you would still have the approval authority and review authority over that, what would essentially be a chapter of the comprehensive plan, if you will, as we continue to look forward to that. But I would say you can probably expect those updates to start happening here within the next year or so as we start, you know, moving, moving towards our annexation efforts and looking at a much larger picture for the city. So I know that this document currently is something that the commission holds to a pretty high regard and looks back to with just about any application that comes forward. So I just wanted to let you all know that that's the way that staff will be proceeding here probably from this, this time forward as we look to update that plan. If there are any specific questions on the report itself, I'd be happy to answer them. Otherwise, like I said, we'll be looking for a motion to accept the, the changes as presented and be able to incorporate those maps into the, the growth management plan. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Grass. I think before we get into discussion, let me open the public hearing on case 19004, annual review of the growth management plan. If anyone in the public wants to speak on this case, please come forward to the podium. And seeing no one, I get to whop the gavel left-handed and close the public hearing. Okay, so we're open for discussion. And I think before we get too deep, Mr. Grass, I appreciate that you already touched on this. On page nine, recommendations for action in the following 12 to 24 months, number three. And I guess one of the things that, eh, I won't say it was a red flag, but kind of raised a flag to me was specifically the comment about updating the master plans, including the GMP, transportation, water, sewer, parks, consolidating all into one comprehensive document. And I had just made a note to myself that Planning and Zoning Commission owns the growth management plan, which I forget exactly how Missouri statutes read that. I'm kind of, I may not be remembering correctly, but I think in some instances, it's called a GMP and some it's called a comprehensive plan. I guess I, I kind of have a concern there that, that, you know, and of course, this is a great one for city attorney to clarify and guide us all, but I, I did not want to give the appearance that Planning and Zoning Commission did not own whatever we call that document that we're legally responsible for by state statute. And, and like I say, you did already touch on that.
Great, great question. I'm glad you brought that up. It is fairly common for cities, much like Raymore, to have a comprehensive planning document, much like I just proposed. And then, as I mentioned before, within that are different chapters that, you know, public works and engineering would kind of own the, the transportation master plan, if you will.
Park Board would own those plans, yeah.
Correct. So it'd almost be just as simple as slipping the GMP as it stands today into a more comprehensive document while the Planning Commission would still have approval and review authority of that chapter.
Is that legal?
I apologize, commissioners. At this point, I'm not sure. I imagine it is. I've taken pretty good notes on the questions, Commissioner Faulkner, that you've asked. I would absolutely love to confer with Mr. Zur tomorrow and get back with you. Like I said, I have-
We're not adopting this tonight, so it's just a concern going forward.
Absolutely. And I, like I said, I, I, my, my inclination is that it's absolutely legal for the city to come together and create a, a master plan, so to speak.
Right, that includes individuals' own- I, I don't see why that's not possible. I just feel a little bit skittish or a little bit cautious to make sure that we do it the right way.
Absolutely.
Yeah, okay. And I know you're on top of this, so that's a good thing. Other commissioners have questions about GMP. Commissioner Bowie?
Well, just a quick question. When looking at the maps, I wasn't sure. You can just shed a little bit of light and make sure I'm looking at this properly. But before, when I was looking at the maps, I noticed just that one change. Is that the only change in these two maps is the east of 291? Just making sure I'm not missing anything.
It is. Where, you'll notice that the, the light yellow, if you will, which is the low-density residential, it's still shown outside of what identified as that future annexation boundary. And that was only really to provide some guidance, because outside of involuntary annexation, which is where the city would pursue annexing land, there is still an opportunity for residents outside the city to voluntary annex into the city. And so we decided to keep that light yellow area outside of our annexation boundary just to provide some guidance should somebody out in the county want to voluntarily annex into the city. But other than that boundary that I just mentioned, which is our, the newly adopted annexation area, that is the only change in the map.
Okay, so go ahead. Commissioner Wiggins.
Well, I was gonna ask for a little piece of clarification, because that was, obviously, the 291, but then I do see on the north side, west of, east of Curzwell, up by County Line Road, there is a small chunk from the top that does come out. I assume that was just... Yeah, and honestly, it looks like it's just a big treat in, maybe an individual person's piece of property. Would that be due to somebody just basically saying, "As long as I'm alive, it's never gonna happen"? And we just go, "Okay, well, we'll just draw the boundary around you."
I believe so that, if you're talking about the little flag lot that comes south of 155th?
Yeah, east of Curzwell, but west of, like, Jeter and Prairie Lane.
Yep, that's actually in the city limits of Lee Summit. So I don't know if that was annexed in between when this map was first adopted and just recently when we updated it. Either that or it was just an oversight that was corrected when, when our JAS staff updated this map.
Okay, and, and maybe I'm a little bit confused now. So what, what I found very clear was that the new intent to annex was not going east of 291. I'm fine with that, but also it looks like the south boundary is not going near as far south. I can't think what that... Well, okay, on, on the first, on the first map, the old, the old map, I think that's the border with Peculiar.
Right.
And that has moved clear north to Hubock Hill mostly on the new map. So there's, there's a sizable area there. I want to say it, looks like it might be a couple of miles that's out of the area of annexation intent, right? So, so we're actually not trying to pull in a lot of that property to the south and some of the property to the east. Those are the big changes.
Correct.
Sound right?
And a lot of those had to do with a more focused effort to try to focus our efforts in moving eastward and maybe not so much south. And I wish I would have brought the engineering staff here. A lot of the, the issues with that property to the south has to do with just the city's ability to serve it with services.
I was gonna ask that, if we annex it, aren't we obligated to service it?
Yes.
And I think, I don't remember the lay of the land, but I think providing sewers is maybe a bit of a challenge. Commissioner Wiggins.
I just, because I didn't notice that at first, because I was actually just going off of the yellow shading. Would it be beneficial for us to remove the yellow shading from that area? Because if it's no longer something of consideration for us, we probably shouldn't have it shaded with... I don't know. Maybe, because to me, I didn't even notice. I just automatically went, "Oh, yeah, it goes all the way south to the same location." But since it's still shaded yellow within the boundary of current, you know, current lines and annexation, annexation intention area. So to me, I just automatically assumed we were going as far south as that is, so.
Right.
I don't know if that's, if there's a reason it's still shaded yellow or maybe make the recommendation that the yellow shading be removed.
Sure.
Because that is confusing. I automatically assumed it was an intention area.
Absolutely. Good question. And staff kind of went back and forth on the best way to show that. So the reasoning that we kept that area outside our annexation area, if you will, as I mentioned, it's still, any, any of those residents in the county can voluntarily annex into the city. And so we left that there as provided, so that if somebody wants to come in and annex, you know, just south of the city, that, that we would adopt that as single-family residential or commercial land, if you will. It's not required that we show it, so if the commission would rather have it a little more clearly delineated, we would certainly be open to that, and I would certainly take any suggestions. But that was the reasoning behind keeping it.
Yeah, I mean, just, I don't know, obviously, without adding too much complexity, like a hashing or anything, but even just an entirely different color, you know, you know, I don't think we use light orange or...
Yeah, I agree. It's, it's a little confusing.
Something that maybe just says, you know, eligible territory for self-annexation or whatever you want, or voluntary, rather. Just something to differentiate.
I actually thought maybe hash that in yellow, but yeah, I agree with you. That would certainly make it a lot more clear.
Maybe even put a diagonal mark through it or something. Or even if you make the line, the delineation line, a little clearer and then an explanation for that bottom, bottom right in the key.
Sure.
Somewhere.
Commissioner Armstrong. Sorry.
Just to dot all the i's and cross the t's, there's another area that appears to have changed north and east of Curzwell, south of 155th. There's just a cutout there. What, can you highlight what the thought was there?
I apologize if you can't see it, but is it that little segment right there? So that, that actually belongs to the city of Lee Summit. I'm not a hundred entirely sure. When this map was originally made, it was in unincorporated la, or unincorporated area, but it has since been annexed into the city of Lee Summit.
Apologies.
No, not a problem at all. So is there, I'm sorry.
Sorry, don't, don't mean to make this continue to go on. So just for my own purposes, so in the, in the 2013 map, east of Curzwell and that upper kind of southeast of the Creekmore area. So we went from a larger rectangle and a smaller square around the, the Raymore property lines. And then the next one, we have just that tiny square. Is that, because there's just one, one little resident who's sticking out and just, but somebody else annexed or voluntarily annexed in the last six years, but then one person's kind of holding on to their little-
Absolutely. So since 2013, a lot of those properties in that area have annexed into the city voluntarily. But as you mentioned, there are a couple that are kind of holding out till the last minute.
Very good. Thank you.
Water. Water. City water service.
Yes, that plays a factor into it as well. Of course, the, the majority of the southern portion is served by the water districts, the separate from the city. But everything generally north of Hubock Hill Road generally is served by the city.
Yeah, okay. Good discussion. Other questions? Y'all have been kind of quiet. Happy with everything? Any other questions from commissioners? We could move on to a motion on this. I think probably what motion might incorporate the improvements to the new map.
Yes, if the, again, if the commission would, would prefer that.
Sure, I'd throw it out and then we can vote on it. Commissioner Wiggins?
I will go ahead and make a motion. I make a motion that we adopt the latest version, the 2019 version of, let me get up to the right page, so I say it properly, of the, the 2019 annual review and report of the growth management plan with the addition of some slight gradient edits to the future land use map for 2019 that reflects some sort of a clarification, if possible, of the southern location of, that's outside of the intention zone.
Second.
Second by Mayor Turnbow? Okay, thank you. I may have a little difficulty repeating this verbatim, but motion on the floor by Commissioner Wiggins, second by Mayor Turnbow, to incorporate the 2019 annual growth management plan review and report with some improvements to the new future land use map. Does that sound okay? All right, is there any discussion on the motion? And if not, all those in favor, raise a hand, please. Seven, eight. Okay, we've got eight in favor, none opposed, no abstentions. And now, Mr. Grass. I believe we're gonna add an item under new business. We don't need a commission vote to add to the agenda, right?
I don't believe so.
I'm fine with that. Okay, league council says we're good. So, Mr. Grass, if you would, give us a title and a rundown on that, on that 7B item.
Absolutely. So the, the new item for this evening would ultimately be the direction from the commission to city staff to begin working on the 30th amendment to the Unified Development Code, which would be, which would entail the allowance or future allowance of urban chickens in the city. So if you think back to a couple of previous meetings, we agreed to bring all that information back once the city results were back in for the ETC survey, which did include a chicken or a, a question that was relative to the keeping of chickens. To prevent a, I guess you could say, an unnecessary, unnecessary meeting for the commission to direct us at a future date to direct us to complete that amendment. Essentially, we're just taking this step now so that staff can start working on that and start preparing the materials for that meeting. So essentially, that would, that would entail, at that, I believe we're targeting May 21st, if I can remember correctly, to bring all of that information back. Staff would bring back the results of the survey as well as a proposed code that would, that would relate to the keeping of urban chickens on residential lots. So just in effort to kind of bundle all of that stuff into one step to take care of it at that, at that May 21st meeting. And so staff, staff has been actively researching the topic and has formulated a draft code. We've been in contact with the Chickens for Raymore group, who prepared a very, very similar code, very similar to what we had prepared. So it would be our anticipation to share our proposed code with that group as well as city residents and city staff prior to that meeting, because obviously it would require a public hearing. So we make our efforts to get all the information out there ahead of time. Again, this, this request is simply just to kind of streamline the process and, and bundle it all into one comprehensive step.
I feel like I just heard you say, "And be prepared for a long meeting that night." That's fine. Okay. I think comments or questions from the commissioners, or we can move ahead to the motion and then discuss.
Just, there were some questions that were raised about predators and I think other information that was being, that was asked to be solicited. Have you had time to get those answers and feel comfortable?
Yes, we have. I believe our animal control staff has been working a little bit on that, and I've reached out to a couple animal control agencies in the area as well.
Thank you.
Any other questions before we go to a motion? Commissioner Wiggins?
Sure. I'll make a motion to, to give staff direct, directive to present in a future meeting, information regarding amendment 30, the, regarding urban chickens.
Second.
You're still thinking about that? Okay, so motion by Commissioner Wiggins, second by Commissioner Armstrong to direct staff to draft a 30th amendment to the Unified Development Code covering urban chickens. Sound good? Now, is there any discussion on that motion before we vote? All those in favor, raise a hand, please. Seven in favor. Any opposed? And Mayor Turnbow in opposition, and that leaves no one to abstain. So the vote is seven to one and zero abstentions. And Mayor Turnbow, as is our custom, if you'd like to explain your opposition to the motion.
I absolutely would like to do that. I understand our staff is extremely busy. And I know, because I'm here almost every day, and see the things that they have to look into. With regard to this particular topic, I had felt that through the previous discussions on this particular matter, that we had done as much as we were really comfortable from a city's perspective in doing, and that was allowing for residential lots at the R1 level, lots of three acres or larger to have it, chickens if they'd like. The, I have talked to a lot of residents who live in the different suburban areas, and those that do have the, the covenants that disallow it, really, you know, they're, they're fine because their covenants disallow it. And, but those, like where I live, in my neighborhood, out there at Park Place, I probably get about one out of 10 that's in favor of it. The others really don't want to live next door to someone has a chicken coop in their backyard 50, 60 feet away. So I, I just feel like that we have really done, I think our codes department has done a great job with, or our planning department's done a great job with trying to appease those that have lots of three acres or larger that didn't previously have that opportunity to have chickens on their property. And I feel like in an area where we're, you know, Mrs. Hubock used to say if we're gonna be a first-class city, or say we're a first-class city, we ought to act like it. I'm not sure chickens are part of that process. And that's my opinion.
Well, I'm glad you were able to express it tonight, and we'll be thinking about this. And I'm sure we'll have a lot more opinions to consider and sift through when the case comes forward. All right, thank you. Let me gather myself a little bit, moving ahead. Okay, city council report this evening. Are you all gonna fight over who gets to give us the city council report? Who's the lucky winner?
I think council will be referring, deferring to staff on that one tonight.
Nice move. Thank you. Okay, Mr. Grass, it's all yours when you're ready.
Thank you, sir. Not a whole lot that would pertain to the Planning and Zoning Commission as it would relate to the city council. The one thing that I do have to bring up, it's March 11th meeting, and I kind of alluded to this in our annual review, was the adoption and approval of the newly revised intent to annex area, which again, was shown in the maps this evening pending the minor changes to the maps. I believe to date, that would be the only item that the commission has seen that would be in front of council at this time.
Okay. While you're on a roll, Mr. Grass, would you like to move ahead and give us the staff report, please?
Absolutely, I'd be happy to. Looking ahead at some of our upcoming meetings, again, last, at our last meeting, we agreed to cancel the April 16th meeting as Commissioner Pfizer, Armstrong, Mr. Catterett, and myself will be in San Francisco for the APA conference. So we're really looking forward to that as it gets closer and closer. So we'll be looking forward to reporting back on some of the great topics and sessions that we're able to sit in on that. The next meeting we have scheduled is the May 7th meeting, the Dean Commercial Platte that was brought forward a couple times previously and since tabled. Staff is actively reviewing that, that proposal and anticipates that to be ready for the May 7th meeting for full review by the commission. And then again, at our May 20, May 21st meeting, I believe it is, is when staff anticipates all of the research and code revisions and everything as it would relate to the urban chickens to be ready for presentation and direction from Planning and Zoning that evening. An update, as our legal counsel mentioned, we did have a board of adjustment meeting this evening for a property over on the east side of town, Mr. Bright Storage Property. He was requesting a variance to reduce the minimum setback for a property that's owned industrial from 100 feet to 20 feet, which sounds like a lot when you hear it. sounds like a lot when you hear it. But essentially, it allows him to subdivide off a front portion of his property where the South Side Fitness Center is. The current tenant that occupies that is looking to purchase that property from him. And so, in order to do that, he's got to subdivide that off, still maintaining access to the back part of his property, which he still runs his business out of. But that was this evening's meeting, and the board did, did vote to approve that, that variance. We do have another one scheduled for May 7th as well. If you're familiar with the Shadowwood subdivision, just off of, just south of Lucy Webb, towards Madison, the developer in that subdivision has just a few lots left that they're trying to build out, two of them being corner lots with some pretty large side yard setbacks, if you will. And so, they're, they're asking to reduce those in order to fit a more modern-style house on it. So that'll go forward to the, to the board on May 7th for their consideration. I do believe that's all the currently scheduled meetings that we have in front of us. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Okay. And for the record, let me note that Commissioner Urquia arrived around 7:30, and we have a full house. Thank you. I hope your team won. Hey, you can, there's still one motion you can vote on this evening. Okay, sorry, back to, back to staff report. Anything from engineering tonight, Mr. Grass?
At this point, not a lot. I think Cockridge Park has been keeping engineering folks pretty busy. They're doing some pretty serious grading work up there towards the amphitheater, kind of figuring out how they want that kind of bowl effect, and the amphitheater to look for some lawn sowing. So they've been working pretty hard on that. And if you've been up there at all, I'm sure you noticed that it's getting to be some nice weather for fishing. The lake is still open. I've always constantly been reminded to remind residents of that, that they can still fish the lake, even though there's fences and construction equipment.
That lake is stocked, correct?
Yes, just recently, I believe, in the last month or so, it was restocked. But they're finishing up work up there. I believe they're targeted towards the end of this month to have the majority of that work finished, if I remember correctly. So they're moving along as weather continues to allow them.
Good. Glad I asked. Is that it for staff reports, then?
I believe so.
Okay, thank you. Well, we'll move ahead to public comment. And if anyone from the public would like to speak to the commission, this is your last opportunity this evening. And seeing no one, we'll move ahead to commission member comment. And I always try to change this up, but I never seem to remember what I've done the last meeting. So Vice Chair Pfizer, can I start with you?
Sure. I actually have no comment. Thank you.
All right, that works. Commissioner Wiggins?
City staff, thank you, as always, for everything. The other thing I would really, I guess, would mention is, I'm looking forward to taking my boys to touch a truck this weekend, out at Rec Park, from 9:00 AM to noon on Saturday, April 6th. So if anybody has kids, grandkids, nieces, nephews, little ones, lots of big, cool machinery and trucks and stuff for them to look at and climb on. So looking forward to attending that, and I recommend you do so as well.
Great, thank you. Secretary Crane?
No comment.
Commissioner Armstrong?
Just thanks for staff for their assistance and time.
All right, Commissioner Urquia?
Let me start off by apologizing for my tardiness. I had two track meets and all kinds of wonderful things going on this evening. Wasn't sure how long you guys would go, so I thought, well, sometimes we go long, sometimes we go short. Let me show up if I can. So I apologize for arriving so late, but grateful to hear that, you know, that things continue to move along and that the city is hard at work. My wife commented on the movement of the loss of trees near the corner of where Price Chopper's at. So she's noticing the changes now, and I know I have to attend these meetings, because I get asked what's going on, and I have to stay on my toes. So, but thank you to the city staff for all that you all do in helping us to move the city forward. And, you know, looking forward to the results of the election. So hopefully, everyone had a chance to get out and vote today.
And if I can take just a second and catch you up on the earlier part of the evening. So we approved the minutes. We basically approved the review, annual review of the growth management plan with some clarifications to the new map that we think will help make it a lot more easily understood. And we added an agenda item under new business to direct staff to draft a 30th Amendment to the Unified Development Code covering urban chickens. And that one met with, with a split vote, seven in favor of proceeding, one opposed. And that was Mayor Turnbow with a very lucid discussion on, on his concerns. So nevertheless, we are moving ahead to allow staff to bring a proposed ordinance forward to us at a later meeting for discussion then. And did I miss anything? Okay. Okay, let's see. Sorry, I was still not done. Commissioner Peterman?
No comment tonight.
Okay, Mayor Turnbow?
No comment.
All right, Commissioner Bowie?
No comment, thank you.
Wow, all right. Well, I'll be very brief. Thank you to staff. This is a little shorter than I anticipated. Gosh, I don't know what I'm going to do with 20 extra minutes. I'll find something. And thank you all. I'm very pleased that we had full attendance eventually this evening. And no, I think, I think it shows our support for the city of Raymore. And I would entertain a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting?
I'll second it.
I don't think we had a first. Wait a minute. Is that, Commissioner Bowie, is that the motion? Okay, who's the second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Peterman. Aren't we a fun bunch to keep an eye on? All those in favor of adjournment, raise a hand, please. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. Get that hand up there. Nine. Thank you all.